All the meeting to order and thank everyone for their attendance. Before we get started, I just want to let you know that Davenport will be arriving a little bit late. He's over in Chesapeake talking about the regional broadband initiative. And Rosemary will not be here because she's at the Federal Advisory Advocacy Council Meeting that she chairs with the Virginia Municipal League. So if we make a note of that, Madam Clerk, I'd appreciate that. We'll now turn over to the City Manager's Briefings to the City Manager.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Welcome to your May 16th City Council Meeting, informal City Council Meeting. Today, we're going to have Erin Sutton, our Emergency Management Officer, provide us a brief on the severe repetitive loss program. But before she starts, I've asked her to prepare a couple maps and to give a brief overview on the fuel spill so that you all get an update. And then she'll come back to me before she starts her severe repetitive loss.
All right, Erin, good to see you. Thanks for being here. You're everywhere when things are not good.
Doing this way too frequently.
Yeah.
So I put together a couple maps just to give you guys all a frame of reference of what's going on. So this, right here is the fuel farm on the base. And there, the fuel leaked out through a couple of the canals here and into the ditch along London Bridge Road. And so the dotted lines, we split it into divisions. This is our south division. We have our north division, and we have our arrowfield division. So this circle here is where they built a reservoir for the fuel. And then our command post was here Thursday, Friday. Oh, thank you. Thank you. So what they've been doing, they have started on Sunday, a flushing operation from the hydrant here to push all of this. What they're doing, they have boomed, and let me see if this shows a little bit better. So these yellows are underflow dams and a very large booming operation up here. And what has happened is it came up through here in the ditch, under the road, down this creek. This is all marshland in here. And what's happening is they, the majority of the operation is occurring up there with vacuum trucks. They had the vacuum trucks along here, and with the flushing operation, that is what allowed them to move their operation off London Bridge Road so we could get it open for Monday morning. So the bulk of the vacuuming is going on here. And then we have a pump station located off of apiary, and they've been able to put a vacuum truck down there as well. So they have continued 24/7 operations. Just to let you all know, we have the Coast Guard, the Navy. We've brought in USDA Wildlife Tri-State for Tri-State Bird Rescue. We have a lot of stakeholders working this right now. So from Thursday all the way through the weekend, the command post was set in the Coast Guard, Navy, myself, and City of Virginia Beach, and DEQ, where the Department of Environmental Quality is also representative in this. And what we did, what they did was split this in two phases. So we're in the emergency phase, which is recoverable fuel. Once we get to the point that there's no more recoverable fuel, they'll move into the remediation phase, and that's where the Department of Environmental Quality takes over jurisdiction of this. Just so you're aware, this is all off Central Drive, all the business parked back in there. And then here is all the marshland. And obviously, this is tidily influenced, so we kind of battle with the back and forth of the fuel and now with the heat. The evapor, the heat is good in the fact that it helps evaporate the fuel, but the odor does rise quite significantly. So last night, they had, they hosted a public meeting at London Bridge Baptist Church for two hours. They had different stations for folks to go to, to meet with the cleanup company contractor, which is HEPCO in the Navy, to talk about the process. They met with the water monitoring folks, which is Department of Environmental Quality, air monitoring, wildlife, and the health department was there as well to answer questions. Probably about 100 people turned out for that. They have been doing continuous, continuous operations, as I stated. And the Navy, Coast Guard, City of Virginia Beach, and DEQ has continued to keep in touch with all of the residents and answering their concerns and passing out all of our information as much as possible.
Thank you, Erin. Some questions of Erin. Dave?
So what has emerged today following the public meeting last night is a significant concern by the residents that are along the canal and the ditches that are affected by that fuel spill. And the, and you've read in the articles of the paper and seen online the concerns that our residents are having with regards to that. I am anxious to hear back from the Navy, their plan to assist those residents in relocating for a couple days off-site until this evaporation that Erin talks about can, can take effect and completely rid us of the, of the fumes that our neighbors are having there. I'm hopeful that they heard the message unclared last night that the public presented to them. And hopefully, by this evening or even before we're done with this meeting, that announcement will come forward on how they're going to proceed to assist the citizens that have been affected by this. There's a lot of discussion about the air quality associated with the fumes there. There's certainly, certainly some standards that have been published, and some of those standards don't give you the high, are the metrics necessary in the first 15 days associated with a spill of this nature. So we're looking to see some additional information on the heels of last night's public information meeting from the Navy and how they're going to provide some, some relief to those most affected. I know for a fact that monitoring's going on up and down the roads with the Navy, with DEQ, the contractor, our health, our state health department is out there. Heidi's been actively engaged since Saturday morning personally as a director. And, and, you know, for those citizens that are out there, I certainly feel for them what they're going through. It's got to be, it's got to be a fairly obnoxious environment, which otherwise would not have been that way had this spill not have occurred. So we continue to be engaged. I appreciate the fact that we had a tremendous amount of staff support from our hazmat team, our fire support. Mr. Kovar was out there throughout the weekend as Erin just moved out there. And public work support to ride to the sound of the guns and deliver sand and materials to help block some of the ditches from, and hold it up so that we could get the pumping operation in place. So that's kind of where we are. It's, we're still in recovery.
DEQ publishing any air data that they've collected so that they could advise people that are either senior citizens or young children generally more susceptible to respiratory stress so that people can assess the risk and take action accordingly whether or not it, are they making their air sampling data available?
DEQ is doing all the water sampling. The EPA is doing the air sampling and the contractor as well, and they're gathering all of that data as they speak.
But they're not publishing the results?
Not that I know of.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Dave, we'll go to the next thing for Erin.
Okay. We'll turn our attention to our agenda item today. This is severe repetitive loss. Let me precede this. As you know, we briefed this three times prior to the City Council. We have really struggled with this FEMA grant program. We've been so instrumental. We've been a national leader in trying to make it appropriate for, for our use. We have been, we have given ourselves a failing grade in our ability to deliver this effectively. And we, we find ourselves in an untenable situation to being able to proceed. So bottom line upfront, today, we're presenting you a brief that's going to basically demonstrate for you that this program really doesn't work and that we really do not have the ability to continue to create the workarounds and create the no-interest loans and the whole nightmare of trying to, trying to effectively raise private homes through local government supervision and contracting. So that is a lead-in on a very positive note. No manager wants to sit before his council and say he's failed miserably, but that's exactly what I'm telling you. Erin, explain how I failed miserably, please.
Okay. Okay. Today, I'm just going to go through each one of the grants and then present the options moving forward. There were some recommendations from the homeowners and from some of our counterparts with VDEM and FEMA to investigate mitigation reconstruction and then what are some options with the flood mitigation grant program moving forward. So since 2011, we've elevated seven homes and continue to experience issues. We're still monitoring a couple of these homes for ongoing issues, so we haven't even closed out the first project. To date, we've submitted the four grant applications. Grant one is the one that we actually raised, elevated the seven homes, and continue to have homes that, that have challenges with them. But ultimately, we, we've put in the four applications for a total of 29. We've been awarded the three, the first one and two after that. The fourth one, we put in 15 months ago and still have not received any notification as to whether we've gotten the award or not. The biggest challenge is we have conducted bid process after bid process after bid process. We continue to get the same contractor and exorbitant costs. In working with VDEM and FEMA, they will not allocate any additional money to fill that gap, so it falls back on the homeowner to cover that. It's gotten worse with each grant. Just for an example, we had a bid come back for a 1,400 square foot house rectangle for $395,000 to elevate it.
You can buy a new house.
You can buy the house.
We have asked repeatedly, we've worked with the contractor for value engineering. We continue to get excessive bids, and again, only one contractor. So this just gives you the idea of where they are, looking at Lynnhaven Colony, over on Bay Island, Princess Anne Hills, Birdneck Point. You can kind of see they're, they're spread out there a little bit. So Grant One, just the short and sweet, that was our first foray into it, started before I came into the city. But at the end of the day, we still have remaining homeowner items. And while the grant was $1.5 million, we have expended significantly more funds, city funds, to work through engineering challenges, staff time, and, and again, some challenges with some of the homes. These are the homes that, that were elevated. And we continue to monitor one of the homes for continuous cracking, another home for settling floor. So we're continuing, we still own these homes. Timeline for Grant Two. So it was eight homes at $1.2 million. This had a total of five homes on Bay Island and three over in Lynnhaven Colony. And we split up the grant geographically to see if maybe that would assist with the bids, again, looking at value engineering. That did not work. And then we tried, we divided it up, so it was a single, you could bid on one house or you could bid on all the houses. That would be where we came up, we ended up with the $395,000, continuing to have one, one bidder. This is just to give you, so the challenge that we have is we put in this grant application based on the information we had at the time. One of the, the challenges with this grant program is that the budgets are estimates. So based on the estimates, and then FEMA never comes back again to provide us any additional funding if we find, like with Grant Two, that all the homes need helical piles, which is an additional $50,000 to $60,000. So even with adjusting for that or having homeowners chip in for the, the difference, some of them, it threw off their benefit cost analysis, so now it does, it becomes not a benefit for them, for FEMA to fund the project. But you can see the, the bids that we've gotten thus far for Grant Two. So we have not been successful in getting a contractor even for one of the homes. Those are the Bay Island homes and then the Lynnhaven Colony homes. Grant Three, we have, was for five homes. And at this point, the soils report has come back, and those homes need helical piles as So these are the three in Lynnhaven Colony. And then we have one in Northgate and one Wake Forest Street. And the nine homes, we submitted an application for $2.9 million. And at this point, we still do not have any notification as to whether we will be awarded that grant or not. And at this point, what happens with this grant program is the clock starts ticking the minute you submit the application. So we're already 15 months behind in order to do this project. So just a little bit more information. The total budget is 2.9. That comes out to $300,000, an average of $300,000 per home to elevate them. So we're getting up into some pretty significant numbers for this federal project. These are kind of scattered about. But you can see that some of them are a bit bigger as well. So currently, all the projects are on hold because the last round of bidding was not successful. And we couldn't in good conscience move forward when, when they're bidding at $300,000 for 1,200 and 1,300 square feet homes. So options moving forward. Do we continue the program with current funding? Talk a little bit about mitigation and reconstruction, utilizing acquisition funds, and then possibly a, a development of a local program. What I want to say about continuing the program with current funding, we have worked with VDEM and FEMA. Their solution, as I've talked to them over and over again, is drop a house until you can do it. So we've accepted, say, eight homes into a project. If you, if you look at the money, we maybe only have enough money to do two houses. FEMA's, FEMA's answer to us is then do two houses. At the tune of $350,000, $400,000, that's not very cost-effective at all. And, and that's the answer that I have gotten consistently for the last four years. So with Grant Two, at the point, we have these three options. Close out the project, request reimbursement for what we have expended. FEMA has conferred that we will receive reimbursement for anything that we have expended on these projects to date. Elevate three of the homes, that's kind of, we think we have enough money if we go with the bids, the exorbitant bids, that we could do three houses and stay within the benefit cost analysis. But do we require the homeowners to pay some amount and balance that cost across the three? That's how we could get the three. The homeowners would have to chip in. Or three, elevate only two homes that fit that small amount of, that fit the BCA, and they get 100% based on what the, the ultimate goal of the, the program was. Staff recommendation is to close out the project, request for reimbursement, and what we have expended. The bid process is not going to change because the contracting mechanism hasn't changed. And I've asked repeatedly. They contract, the contract has to be with the city, not the homeowner. So we're going to continue to get exorbitant bids because we're a local government. Grant Three options, close out the project, request reimbursement, or only elevate the home that may not require helical piles. And that's a big "may." It's over in, it's over on Northgate. It's a slab-on-grade, but it very well may need helical piles. But that was the one option there. And then again, our staff recommendation is to close out the project and request reimbursement. Grant Four, the timeframe, as I stated earlier, we're now in 14, 15 months into it, and the timeline started with the submission of the grant. And if we do get the award, it's to, recommendation is to reject it if received because now our timeline has been shrunk considerably. Several of the homeowners, because the bids are coming back so high, you could knock over a house and rebuild it for $395,000. So FEMA does have a program, a demo rebuild, or they call it mitigation reconstruction. So we did our research on it. It is new construction. It'll be up to code. There's no retrofit foundation challenges. Everything's, everything's provided, everything's new. They have to be in compliance with our, with our floodplain ordinance. However, the funding is capped at $150,000. So you have to demo it, design it, construct it, manage it, develop plans, store the people's stuff, and have a new house. $150,000 is the cap. You must stay within 10% of the original square footage of the entire house. Unknown challenges with, we couldn't get a straight answer on what does this mean for mortgages, lien holders, et cetera. We don't, this program is not used very often, so we're not sure what the federal process, when we ask the questions. They were just beginning to use it in West Virginia after the river flooding, and those houses are about 600 and 700 square feet houses. We are not talking about that size. This is the exact same contracting mechanism. So now, instead of elevating private homes, we, as the city, would be constructing private Due to the same contracting issues, we don't believe this is a viable program either. So where does it take us? So flood mitigation program, the flood mitigation assistance grant program, elevation is one piece. Mitigation reconstruction is second piece. Neither which are, are great options for us. The third one is acquisitions. And I know we've talked about acquisitions. However, as we look at drainage projects, as we look at the future, we've already received calls from neighbors in several of the neighborhoods, hey, do you want to buy my house? Hey, do you want to take this off my hands? The acquisition program was developed for that. And it is a program that Chesapeake uses, multiple jurisdictions across the country use the acquisition program. That cap, to get, it's a benefit cost just the same, but their straight-out benefit cost for a one is $276,000, which is a reasonable cost for some of the smaller homes, something that we can, could look into. But the flood mitigation grant is also, can also be used for public projects. Flood storage, culvert expansions, green infrastructure, open space, things like that. So the flood mitigation grant program last year was allocated $165 million. We have been successful each year that we've written grants. So the option is, do we look at another mechanism out of the flood mitigation grant program? The other option we've tossed around is developing a local program. Obviously, this has significant dollar signs behind it. Not all the homes, we don't want to acquire all the homes because if you use federal dollars to acquire these homes, you cannot do anything else on that property ever. It has to be open space. You can put a picnic table, you can make a park, you can make, you can do flood storage, you can do any of that, but you can't put a pump station on it. You can't rebuild a house. So it becomes open space in perpetuity. So that's the other side of the coin on, on acquisitions. So a local program, do we look at buying houses from homeowners that are ready to get out, that we don't want to see a loss in our real estate tax base, and then we assist them through the process? Meaning, we buy the house, demolish the house, and then whoever comes in to buy the property, they have to fall within our floodplain standards or even higher floodplain standards. This was us just talking about some ideas moving forward. Or even, do we look at something smaller, establishing a local program to offer grants for folks that maybe, some, some mitigation strategies that homeowners can work through, flood vents, things like that. So we've been kind of banging around some ideas. We've gotten to know these families very well. It breaks my heart that we cannot make this project go. 29 homes, that's 29 families that I've known for the last four years, and we still can't produce an elevated house out of, after Grant One that was done three years ago. So I'm up, I'm, I'm trying to think of some options. But at the end of the day, the elevation project has not been successful. Seven homes in six years. We recommend closing out all the grants, requesting reimbursement for what we've expended to date. We recommend turning down Grant Four so we don't get into this again. And we recommend explore other uses of the flood mitigation assistance grant program. And maybe look at what are some other things that the city could do moving forward to assist these flood-prone homes.
Thank you very much. We do have some questions. Jim Wood.
Thanks. Erin, just a couple of question, a couple of questions and some comments. First, I want to make sure that we're not leaving anybody's house not completed.
We have not started anyone's house. After Grant One, we closed the fiscal piece out, and we're continuing to monitor some of the challenges with those homes. We have not begun construction, mobilize, nothing on anybody's home.
Yeah. And I think, just as, as perhaps a comment part of it, this is really, I don't really think it's, it's a failure on Dave's part as, as much as it is frankly, a failure on the part of the federal government. This is a classic example of federal government doing a one-size-fits-all type thing. You know, I can think of four or five companies that do helical piles right now that, that probably would never bid on a federal project. You know, these prices are based on the fact that you've got the federal paperwork and all this stuff. I mean, I've been doing construction for several decades now, and I did federal work. It is extraordinarily painful, and unless you're set up for it, it's just, it's not worth it. And, you know, people who build houses don't also do federal work.
Right.
And, and the fact that you're going to spend $350,000 to elevate a 1,400 square foot house is, is just mind-boggling. But, but I really think that Erin's on to something here with, with creating local projects. Because I think as, as we take a look at, at least stories that we hear from, from within some of the areas that were flooded from, by Matthew, people saying that they, they want to sell their houses and do that sort of thing that they can't, I, I think that's something maybe we look at. I, I think we look at a, at a local program that, that would make sense. You know, similar to how the ECOs issue around Oceana. You know, if people are willing to sell and it makes sense for us to, to purchase, and maybe that's the way to do it. But it's just, this program, I, I had issues with it from the very beginning. I mean, I know Dave was saying, when he was Deputy City Manager, this was going to be 30% more, and I think it's probably 300% more, but it's just nuts. But that, that's just my, my take.
Thank you, Jim. Bobby?
Yeah, just a thought, you know, I, I think this might have been a well-intentioned program, but basically, it's a Band-Aid on a hemorrhage, a major hemorrhage, and it really doesn't accomplish what it says to go out. And I think, you know, Jim brought up some very good points, but, you know, I think, I think we're all pretty determined over the next, like, right now and over the next couple of years to come up with a big overall strategy that's far more encompassing, you know, that uncovers everybody, that really, you know, kind of fixes the problem. I mean, the problem is multi-tiered. You have homes that are immediate danger right now that are unlivable and some other things, and other storm strategies I spoke with the manager on over the years that we could implement pretty much immediately. You know, you know, once again, it's a type of thing, with a complex problem like that, you've got short-term goals and long-term goals. And the thing is that, but I think the important thing is that as we go forward, we articulate to the public exactly what we're doing, to let them know that, no, this is not a 15-year plan, that it's an ongoing now plan, and to keep it concurrent.
Thank you. Barbara?
Well, when you were making your presentation, I just couldn't help but think about the open space program. And, you know, so many of our programs really have multiple outcomes, and that program has had major multiple outcomes in the, in the aspect of prevention. When I think of a lot of the properties that we acquired through that program, had they developed, those places would be flooding big time. And of course, it wasn't. But, but really, the fact that many of these properties came to the city for open space purchase was because they were difficult to develop and hadn't been developed and so forth. And I also know that the BRAC purchases that we made here in the ITA have also prevented a lot of properties, had they developed in residential, from being nightmares. And I know of one on Indian River And I know of one on Indian River Road that actually had submitted a plan for development just as the BRAC came out. And I just think about it now every time I ride past. If that had developed in houses, they would be flooded. So this whole thing of prevention, when we can, is really important. And I think going forward, from this time on, this experience we've had, that when we are looking at properties for potential development, that the first thing we ask is, is this going to flood when we put houses there? And I really think when we look, like I say, at the open space program, some of these other programs, we can breathe a sigh of relief that some of these properties did not develop. But I think when it gets to, how do we do, what do we do with these properties that are already flooding, is there anything to be able to work through it? If, I think if there are some opportunities to develop some kind of program for acquisition in a local program, we ought to look at it. I mean, doesn't mean we, it will work, but I think it's something to look at. There may be a way to have it become successful, just like the ACU's situation did.
Thank you, Shannon.
I just have a question. You said we had raised seven houses, but there were still issues. Are those seven still flooding, or?
No, just with the elevation. We've got some cracking in some foundations and some settling, and so we're monitoring. And we get calls periodically to come out and check things here and there, so we lifted their house.
Do you have a liability there? I mean, what's, how does that work?
Yeah, well, we lifted their house. We were the contracting mechanism that lifted their house.
Matter of fact, I can't say it here, but we can brief on that on this.
Get out of this thing as quick as we can.
Yeah.
John, then we'll wind up.
I'd say, I think it is a poor program that has been well-executed by us. And you've got to say what you do within the parameters. So I think it, there's many things we don't do well, but we did this well as we could with, but it also tells why the federal government should get out of this program, because the federal government isn't designed to provide customized solutions. And I'm betting McKelvey at OMB's probably got this on his hit list of places to take budget cuts, because it can't be done well. By its very nature, the federal government isn't designed to do these things well. And so it is going to fall to locality, but we have a lot of things on our list to do. And I don't know where in the priority buying people's homes would compete against that long list. It's always nice to have a long list, but I think people need to be realistic that we have a long list, and that people shouldn't be overly optimistic that the larger local taxpayers can come in and make whole, at some degree, these properties. I think that, I wouldn't want anyone to walk away with that expectation either.
Good point. Any other questions or comments? Aaron, thanks very much. We appreciate it. All right, Dave, you're going to introduce the chief?
Yes, sir. Before we get too far away from College Beach Weekend, I thought it was important that we have chief come forward and provide a after-action report. What he's going to present to you today is feedback on our operation to ensure order and discipline throughout the city. As you know, College Beach Weekend is not a sanctioned event, and as such, with the amount of intel that is collected, we must prepare for all things that we believe that we have an understanding is about to occur. This would be 2017, represents our sixth College Beach Weekend, having started six years ago, kind of with some Sandbridge rentals, and has grown significantly since then. So I'll turn it over to the chief. He's got his executive staff here with him and his second precinct commander, and you might want to introduce him.
Glad to have you.
As everyone knows, Deputy Chief Tony Zucarroll, Deputy Chief Billy Dean, Deputy Chief Pat Gallagher, Captain Mike Ronan, and Lieutenant Billy Zelmus, who will assist with the PowerPoint.
We welcome all of you.
This was a full mobilization of the police department, and as I get through this, not only did we fully mobilize the police department, but then we had to utilize some additional overtime hours with a full mobilization. Just want to start off by letting you know that a lot of social media goes on concerning this weekend. As the city manager said, this is not an event held by the city, it's happening. And it's not just at the oceanfront. Not only did we have large crowds, which I'll get into in a moment, at the oceanfront, but we also had four ABC establishments on Holland Road, which were having special events during that weekend. Four at the oceanfront, three in the Lynnhaven Road area were having special events, and one in Western Bayside. So we had a number of different things that were happening around the city in connection with College Beach Weekend, other than just at the oceanfront. We also know that we did have some special events in other places of the city. At the convention center, we did have the basketball tournament that was going on. We did have a special sunrise, I believe gospel event at the 24th Street Park. And at the Virginia Beach, at the Princess San Athletic Complex, we had field hockey, and we had football. So there were a number of things that were happening in the city. We had the international tattoo that was happening in Norfolk, and we also had an event at the TED Convocation Center. So we had a lot of activity in this region during this particular weekend. Want you to know that we begin planning the day after College Beach Weekend for the next year. We do this for every major event that we have in our city. As you can see, not only do we do internal planning with the police department, we do external planning with all of the stakeholders, especially in and around the oceanfront, to include other governmental agencies, and I will get to those in a moment. We plan and we train for special events year-round. It's nothing new for our police agency. During this year, and as in previous years, we have a lot of outreach efforts. We're very proud of the fact that even though the police department is the lead agency, the lead department for the city, during this weekend, we have a lot of support from a number of other departments within the city government. No longer is it just a police activity, it is a city activity. One of the things that I really want to hone in on is, if you look down on this, one of the bullets points is the Department of Justice, the DOJ. I think we're one of the few police departments in the country that reaches out to the Department of Justice ahead of time and says, A, we would like to help you train our folks, especially our student ambassadors, or give us some training tips on what we could do, and B, at any given time, we want you to work directly alongside the Virginia Beach Police Department. In other words, our officers do, I think, such a magnificent job when it comes to large-scale events, that we ask the DOJ to be there to observe and to give feedback. Like I said, we continually go through a series of debriefs after major events, and I am very proud to say that Deputy Chiefs of Carol and a number of captains have attended special event summits. The last one was in Myrtle Beach, where we are one of the main presenters during those summits. Other agencies now contact us to say, how do you manage a large-scale event? We look very heavily at social media. Now, this is, this is public access social media. Everybody has this idea that, because I think they watch too much TV, that police departments can just do whatever they want to do when it comes to social media, and we have all these different connected dot programs, and we can find out what's happening all over the country at any given time. That doesn't happen. It has to be public access social media. And we do that. We scrub it very heavily within our police agency. We also work with the merchants at the oceanfront and the Hotel Motel Association for a security plan in each individual venue. We can't be everywhere at all times, so we rely on our partners, our stakeholders at the Beach Borough, to assist with a good security, safety and security plan. We also look at the Greenbrier Corridor to see what their hotel occupancy will be during any major event, but we also do it on this weekend. As I said earlier, we do a lot of in-house training. We call it command and control training. When you're putting 250 officers on a shift at any given time, we have to make sure that we have the proper command and control and the proper levels of supervision to make sure that we can have this kind of event with the least amount of issues possible. We also train heavily with the merchants at the oceanfront for ABC laws, liquor laws, as well as the establishment review task force, which some cities call a bar task force. We've taken the, the idea that it's more than just bars or restaurants, it's establishments that we will go to, and we will assist in training their staff on what they need to look for during any kind of weekend or any kind of event. We have two screenshots. We had a pool party at 10th Street. Now, how did this pool party come about? It came about because of social media. Somebody decided the pool was a nice place. Before long, we had a large group of individuals at the pool. The police were called. We assisted the hotel at that particular point in time. Later, we were called back because two individuals decided that they were going to engage in a fight. Two females, about 200 other individuals gathered around to watch, because remember, this weekend is a reality TV event for a lot of young people. Everybody had their cell phones out, they recorded it, we watched it on YouTube, we did make an arrest, an officer was assaulted during that particular incident, and then we cleared the crowd up very quickly. The bottom picture is 18th Street and Atlantic Avenue sometime after the shooting incident, which I'll discuss in greater detail in a moment. Just want you to understand sometimes the size of our sidewalk crowd and the, what we call the intense crush. That many folks in that small area at any given time. And we'll show you a little clip from that in a moment. Let's go to the boardwalk. This is a shot of the boardwalk. About 7:00 PM, 24th Street. I spoke with some folks from the Neptune Festival and said that sometimes during Neptune Festival, especially with the art show, the boardwalk is about this crowded, so you could kind of get the idea of just how many young folks were on that boardwalk at that particular given moment. Now, there's a lot of conversations going around on a lot of corners of the city, and I've been asked, why didn't we clear the boardwalk? Well, a boardwalk is where people are supposed to go to have a good time, and they were having a good time at the boardwalk. We monitor large crowds, but we're a resort city, and we have a boardwalk. That's where folks go to. I want to show you a piece of a clip, 18th and Atlantic. Turn it up a little bit.
What are they saying?
Okay. I set this up for two reasons. You know, a large number of people, that song is not on my playlist. They were having a good time. One individual had a boombox. Our officers eventually worked their way into the crowd. If you ever listen, I use a term, do the slow dance. It wasn't go in and break things up immediately. Take your time, talk to folks. Eventually, the entire group of young folks who were dancing and having a good time and singing began to dissipate, began to move. As a matter of fact, we eventually convinced the young gentleman with the boombox to take it onto the beach, and that's exactly what he did. So I wanted to show this for a big reason. The weekend, as I will explain, is a contradiction. It's almost a dichotomy. We did have a lot of voluntary compliance. We had a lot of folks who were just out having a good time. Remember when you were 20? We did things like, I never did this, but we, young folks go out and have a good time. They stay up until the sun comes up. Then we had the other incidents, which I'll talk about. But by and large, as we entered into crowded situations, as the officers used tremendous verbal skills, we got folks to voluntarily comply with what we needed to do. So I wanted to show that, that little piece. Friday. We come in at 5:00, leadership comes in at 5:00, we have our staff meetings, then we bring the officers in at 6:00. There were large crowds, they were manageable. You know, Virginia's an open carry state, and we did see an amount of open carry. That, you know, a lot of people get very concerned when folks are walking around with guns. I do. But Virginia's an open carry state. We did divert traffic off Atlantic Avenue. We do this quite often. This was nothing new. Once Atlantic Avenue begins to really, the sidewalks get congested, the traffic gets congested, it's a certain time where there's really not much commerce going on, driving up and down Atlantic Avenue. You know, over the years, we begin to divert the traffic off. We had three officers assaulted, they were not injured, and we did recover two handguns after we made arrests. They were concealed handguns. Saturday was a little different event. The crowd density was considerably higher than Friday. Friday night is your inbound night on any weekend, any major holiday weekend. Friday night, it starts out slow, it begins to build, but it's your inbound night. Saturday, everybody's in town. We noticed that about 3:30, the crowds were getting extremely large, almost on the sidewalk, almost the size of the 4th of July crowds. The difference is this, the 4th of July crowd is spread out on Atlantic Avenue. During College Beach Weekend, it's predominantly 15th to 25th Street. Even though we had folks south of 15th and north of 25th, the main crowd, the main number of young folks were 15th to 25th, which is pretty consistent with any weekend. We did have an officer assaulted, we diverted traffic off Atlantic Avenue, and then we diverted traffic eastbound, 264 eastbound, we diverted it back westbound, once we reached total saturation at the oceanfront. And the concern was, when the traffic gets that backed up, when it gets that congested, we can't move a rescue or fire truck from one end of the beach to the other. That's the moment where we then divert traffic off of 264 from eastbound back to westbound. And we do this on a number of 4th of Julias for the last couple of years. I'm going to say right now, we're probably doing it this 4th of July, when we hit saturation point, and next year during College Beach Weekend, we'll wind up doing the same traffic 10:30 PM, the world changed. At 18th Street, we had the shooting. We had four individuals injured. Fortunately, the injuries were in lower extremities of their body, no fatalities during that time. And at 11:30, we had another shots fired call in the 200 block of 20th Street. That was multiple shots that were fired. No one was injured during that particular incident. Deputy chief made the decision, and we conferred on it and agreed additional staffing was to be brought in from the other precincts. Now, remember, the other precincts are also busy. We have a large city to worry about, and, but the decision was bring extra units down to the oceanfront, as well as evening shift officers were held over. Now, the evening shift officers worked a 10-hour shift, and we held them over from the end of their shift to make sure that the incidents at the oceanfront did not escalate. We did have a stabbing in the 300 block of 24th Street near the 7-Eleven. That was a self-reported. We didn't get a call for service. The individual reported after the incident. And then we had this phenomenon that started where some young folks would decide that they were going to start a stampede. I, that's about the best word I could use. They'd start running, and everybody would see them, and they'd start running. And I think it was to see what the reaction of the police would be. Fortunately, that flash mob look, the officers understood what was going on, everybody remained cool, calm and collected. All the composure was there. They did their little run, they went back up on the sidewalk, and that was the end of the run. Again, there was, it's a dichotomy. We have shots fired calls, we asked people to leave the area, they did, once we explained what was happening. The other interesting thing was, the streets were closed of vehicular traffic, and yet most of the young folks stayed up on a sidewalk. So there was a lot of compliance during this particular weekend. I'll get into the enforcement. This shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. Most of our arrests tickets and summonses between the ages of 18 and 25. We did have some summonses issued to individuals over a certain age, but those are traffic summonses. The types of arrests, we also wanted to show, and I don't know if you had time to digest it, most of it was your low-level order maintenance. We did have the issues with weapons, we did have the fights, we did have those calls for service where arrests were made, but a lot of the arrests, I think the number one, were liquor laws. I mean, that's not really anything new at the oceanfront. When we break out arrests, what we like to do is break it out demographically by age, demographically by race, and then by analysis of residents. We like to show that, we present before the Human Rights Commission twice a year on everyone that we've arrested in the city. I think it's important that we show the data, these are the folks that we're arresting, and we show, in this particular case, I want you really to look at something really close. And, you know, I- And, you know, I get a lot of questions when it comes to data, especially demographic data. If you look in 2017, 24% of the folks that we arrested or we wrote a summons to fall in the white category at that oceanfront. We did not single out any demographic. We did not single out any gender. We did not single out any individuals for arrest or summonses. If you violated a traffic law or you violated a law, we took appropriate action. We also like to look at this from a five- or six-year snapshot. I can tell you that the last couple of years, the weather was not conducive to large crowds. So your arrest data was down. It's up this year, where it was a few years previously. And then we also show it graphically of the residents of persons arrested. And what we like to say is 50% of the folks that we either arrested or wrote a summons to happen to live in our region. I get a lot of questions about other cities. I want everyone to know that within that oceanfront, within a one-hour drive, a 45-minute drive, our standard metropolitan statistic area is what, 1.4 million people? Ocean City, Maryland, it's like 80,000. I'm always asked, what about Ocean City, Maryland? Ocean City, Maryland, full-time population is 7,500 people. That's one-third just green run. So we have a whole different dynamic than a lot of other areas. Before I get into the next piece, which is, what did it cost you for this particular weekend? Again, a lot of conversation's been going on about what kind of calls that citizens were calling in. We had about 660 calls just at the oceanfront for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And that's a 24-hour period from Friday morning until Sunday midnight. Close to 900, not only the oceanfront, but the surrounding area, are two patrol zones. And I wanted to look at that. What were the top calls for service? Of the 660 at the oceanfront, almost 300 of them revolved around traffic stops by officers, officer-initiated investigations, cellular 911 hangups, and officer narcotic arrests. So this thought of folks in the back neighborhoods making a number of calls into the police because of issues in the neighborhood might not be there. It might be a perception. We had two full squads of officers working anywhere off the oceanfront, mainly in Old Beach. They also covered the Shadow on area and some areas of the North End to make sure that order maintenance is controlled throughout our residential neighborhoods. And well, it should be. People should not have to put up with large crowds, loud parties and everything in their neighborhoods. The other thing that we looked at was, I heard the comment, there was a lot of destruction. Well, we had five cases of destruction of private property, and they're all vehicles. There was no city property that was destroyed. We did have issues with landscaping on the boardwalk, but with that many folks, you're gonna have issues with landscaping on the boardwalk. But we did not have, we didn't have individuals purposely destroying city property. So then we reached out to the Hotel Motel Association. And we wanted to know, how did the hotels fare during that weekend? Basically, just fine. The comment that hotel rooms were torn up wasn't really there. That's the response that we're getting back, not only from the Hotel Motel Association, but also from resort management. So, now we're gonna get into a little bit of pain, and that is, what did it cost us for the weekend? This is the 2016 numbers. I don't have the 2017 numbers in yet for the weekend because payroll is still working on crunching all of that. It's gonna be north of this figure. It's gonna be close between, we add in other city agencies to $300,000. That's because we have to mobilize the whole department. If it's your days off, we cancel them, and you have to come to work. One final piece that I'd like to bring up before we have questions. Deputy City Manager Kovar and I sat right here with a lot of members from the media. And I made a statement. And you'll see the first half of the statement. It was after the shooting. And you'll see in the first half of the statement, I said, individuals were running almost stampede-like north on Atlantic Avenue, south on Atlantic, and west on 18th Street. And that was what was used. But there's a second part to that statement. Ironically, nobody used it. I think the first part might have been the eye catcher or the catching statement. I would like you to hear the entire statement, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay with counsel.
Please.
Couple of dozen people responded directly to 18th Street. Those were the cops. Those were the cops who care that lives matter. Those were the cops who went to that scene while the shots were being fired to ensure safety for the individuals and to try and locate the suspect with the gun. And I need to say that numerous times throughout every conversation that we ever had. Those cops care. They put themselves in harm's way for people they've never met, they have real connection to, and will never see again, why, because they're cops.
So now you know how I feel about our police department and the work that they did on every major holiday, but especially when you have a large-scale event and shots are being fired. Questions?
Thank you. And before we get into questions, I feel like I can speak for the entire city council because I've heard from a lot of them that, you know, we want you and the entire police department to know that they did a superb job in a very difficult situation. And we're all very proud of the work they did. Questions or comments? John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would echo your comments on the police department. I think, from all of the merchants I've spoken to at the resort, I mean, it's universally, they feel like everybody really did a good job. And I hope that the council and the public as a whole understands that there's an awful lot of planning that goes into this weekend, that it's not something that the police department takes lightly or anyone else on city staff. You know, as you know, we have had groups in the past that have worked through an awful lot of things to plan better for it and make it a better experience for everyone. And we've implemented an awful lot of those things. And I know that we're concentrating on what the police department has done here today. But it's more than just the police department. It's, you know, the hotel community, the restaurant community. It's, you know, all of our folks that do beach events and those types of things. So, but we're gonna continue to do it. I mean, we can always do better. I mean, there's always things that, you know, we've talked about that we can implement and make it a better experience for everyone. And so I'll be continuing to have a working group to look at those issues. And so I'd ask members of council, if y'all have any folks that you think would be instrumental in that effort, to let me know so we can put them on the list. And also, as we have, if there's any other ideas that you all are receiving from the public as a whole, if you would point those over to me, and we will go through and we'll vet them. And if there's something that's worthwhile and it makes sense, and we think we get a positive outcome from, then we'll be sure to implement that as well.
Thank you. Just for the information, counsel, I've had several people reach out to me all for help, and I've passed on those names to Councilman Warren. And, you know, also, a lot of different thoughts and ideas on perhaps the things that could be done. That's also been passed on, and I would ask that each council member consider doing the same, please. Bobby?
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to echo, I think the police do a remarkable job, not only on this weekend, but every weekend, every day. And if you look at the oceanfront, you know, during the summer, you know, it's a challenge, especially on weekends. And they go through it. And I think one thing we can never even think, you know, even have a perception of taking things for granted, we have to make sure that the men and women that serve with you have the resources and the recognition that we need, and they get the priority that they really deserve. And I thank you and your command staff and everybody on the street. Thank you.
John?
I just want to thank you for including the neighborhood numbers. I think that's very important to push that out. I don't think many people, the press didn't really cover that. I think there has been, always the anecdotal thing becomes the norm. So I think that was good statistics to get. I duly do appreciate that. And I think that would be good to push out to those local communities. That was excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Shannon?
I just, for the record, whoever's watching, we get so many emails and phone calls that the city is sanctioning this event or is a city event. This is not a city event. And I just kind of wanted to throw that out there so that, I mean, we do all we can to make sure our visitors have an enjoyable, safe experience. But this isn't something that the city organizes from year to year.
Thank you, Shannon. Other questions or comments? Chief?
Thank you, sir.
I hope you take back the positive message from this body to your troops.
What I'd like to do is use that for our internal messaging, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thanks, Chiefs.
Okay, counsel.
Thanks, Michael.
We'll continue on.
We got Warren coming in. It's time for your quarterly biomedical initiative update. And today, we're gonna talk a little plan and policy action. Warren, welcome back.
Yes, sir. Glad to have you. Mayor, members of council. I don't need it. Okay. As the manager said, this is our opportunity to provide counsel with a quarterly update on many of the activities that have happened over the last three, four months. Joining me, of course, in the presentation, I'll have both David Couch and Steve Harrison. And in a minute, I want to also introduce our newest strategic partner in our effort here as well. As an outline, if you will, for the presentation, we want to talk a little bit about a special event we hosted back in April. It was called Virginia Thrive 2017. We were the host community. It was held at the Hilton 31st Street. We brought essentially all of the minds and individuals involved in the healthcare biosciences in the state and the Commonwealth of Virginia Beach for a summit. And we'll share a little bit with you on that. We had some great activity, continue to have some great activity. A newest member of our bio family, Owl Metabolomics, has joined us. It's a company based out of Bilbao, Spain. The mayor announced that while we were on our trip. They're going to be setting up their operations here in Virginia Beach and have some additional information to share regarding their decision to locate their operations here in the city. Talk about our Veterans Care Center, where that stands. A bit about our Innovation Park, the park that's in Princess Anne Commons, that we look forward to standing up as the host for much of our initiative in terms of facility investment. And give you a little bit about our newest initiative and introduce our newest strategic partner with regard to our innovation challenge, and then summarize with some quick next steps. But first, back to the Virginia Bio Thrive Conference. As I mentioned, we hosted this bi-annual conference here in Virginia Beach on the 6th of April. 300 biomedical professionals, university personnel, executives, professors attended this event. We were asked to really stand this event up. The Virginia Bio Initiative really wanted to host this in Virginia Beach. And we took it and made it possible for what they've said to be one of the most successful clusters, if you will, of interested parties in the biomedical field here in Virginia to have a chance to dialogue and talk about the initiative and how we can continue to grow the ecosystem, if you will, here in Virginia, let alone Virginia Beach. And it gave us an excellent opportunity, quite frankly, to have some face time with a number of companies that were really excited to hear about the collaboration that we have going on here and many of the initiatives that we're taking on as a part of growing this industry sector. We also used that opportunity to unveil our newest video. And you can see that on our website, yesvirginia beach dot com. Concerning Owl Metabolomics, we're, again, extremely excited that they have decided to join our family of new bio companies here in Virginia Beach. As I mentioned earlier, they are opening up their U.S. headquarters in our Bio Accelerator, which is located there at Tywar Community College in the Health Professions Building. They are a sister company, if you will, to Sanyal. In other words, they also do research in the studies of NASH, which is a non-alcoholic liver disease that Dr. Sanyal, who you all, and we've introduced to you all in the past, has decided early on to move his scientific operations out of VCU here. And it's been interesting, as we've come to learn, that Anru Sanyal is to this whole idea of studying the liver disease as Beckham is to soccer. I mean, we have a rock star here in Virginia Beach. And it's been his name that we've been able to leverage and introduce our initiative to a number of opportunities that we're following up on. And certainly, this new collaboration between Owl and Sanyal is going to bring added attention to our work here in Virginia Beach. The Accelerator, it is a tool that is becoming increasingly popular and necessary for us to execute some of what we're trying to do. It's, as I mentioned, is housed at the Tywar Community College Regional Health Profession Center. What we have seen that having, by having this space, this wet lab and office space, has really allowed us to have dialogue with startup companies and small companies that are looking to advance their research. They cannot certainly afford the real estate that goes along with office space. And having the Accelerator has really been a key component to our discussions. And we've been fortunate to be able to also announce today that Tywar Community College has decided to expand space in the Health Professions Building to accommodate additional interests that we're beginning to draw up with regard to the use and the deployment of that space. So, real excited about that partnership. And we cannot underestimate or undersell the importance that the Accelerator has had in some of our earliest success. Giving you a bit of, now that we've been on the ground, if you will, for a year and a half now, sort of an assessment, if you will, of our prospect analysis. This is sort of a profile of the kinds of things that we've come to learn and understand. And maybe no surprise, but majority of biomedical prospects are startups, are small companies. That's where that entrepreneurship, that's where that startup, that's where that ingenuity comes from. Individuals that, you know, have an idea, a concept, and are willing to invest time, effort to advance that concept into something commercial that maybe can become commercialized to the marketplace. Small companies are, you know, a large portion of where drugs originated. A major study group here, HBM Partners, who is a heavy investor in small startup companies and in the biosciences, has placed well over $1.5 billion in investment, really sees this and affirms that, you know, the idea of working with these small companies is really where the opportunities are gonna rest for us. And certainly, our work that we've done so far has sort of attested to that. And again, once again, I can't overemphasize the importance that the Accelerator space has allowed us to really have that conversation with companies. And as you look at sort of the word cloud that's been put there, these are some of the comments that we're hearing out there, you know, things like Research, Accelerator Lab, Wet Lab, you know, some of our assets that are here, EVMS, Old Dominion, some of the universities. Although, I gotta say, we're not a major hub for research being conducted out of Hampton Roads. We've been able to, I wouldn't say necessarily overcome that, but we've been able to mitigate some of that with some of the other initiatives that we have going on within our program. The Veterans Care Center had a public meeting back in March with the community to discuss the facility. Well-represented, well over 120 or so residents came out to talk about the facility. Good dialogue. I think we got consensus and buy-in from the community to understand the value proposition that this facility will have to the region and to Virginia Beach, and certainly what it could mean to the surroundings of, with their homes. And our next steps with the approval of this, the budget, will look to put some investment into the extension of Nemo Parkway and prepare for what we hope to be a groundbreaking for this facility in the fall with execution to come online sometime in the fall of 2019. The Virginia Beach Bio Innovation Park, this is the property that the city council assigned and transferred to the Development Authority. We have actively been putting in the initial set of infrastructure plans, if you will, together to start thinking and building out what to start thinking and building out what the potential could be, and some of that has led to some conversations by interested developers who've, uh, engaged in, uh, some conversation with us about putting in quasi-speculative space. Uh, they need a little bit of lease-up, uh, to go along with that, and, and there's some conversations for us to accommodate that. But the interest is beginning to, uh, to generate in the marketplace, uh, for investment, uh, in, in, in the, in the bio park. It's critical to us, 'cause, you know, we've been playing a chicken or the egg kind of play here, pursuing the science and research at the same time, looking to, uh, accommodate a facility or a space for that research to go, and, and it's, it's, it's come, going along a pretty good parallel track where I think, uh, you know, very soon, we'll be able to ink a relationship with a developer to, to put the first, uh, what we propose to be sixty thousand square foot building, uh, in, in the bio park, again, to be that magnet, if you will, uh, to, uh, help us, uh, expand and grow, uh, the footprint from the standpoint of companies interested in, in, in Virginia Beach to, to, uh, to advance their research. Uh, we're, we're playing with some signage packages, if you will, for the gateway entry into the, into the park. Uh, our theme or our, uh, sort of the in- wave of innovation, so that's sort of what you see there in terms of, uh, a signage, uh, as you see as a potential, um, entry, uh, signage into the park. And, and we're hoping within the next, um, you know, uh, uh, six to eight months, we could, uh, at least get a, um, a, a gateway road, uh, placed there so that we can, you know, designate the, uh, actual entrance into the, into the park. Okay, the next section, um, this is where, you know, we've made, uh, some substantial, uh, headway and in many ways, are breaking ground into some new, uh, territory. As I mentioned, we have a new, uh, strategic partner that's come on board to, uh, to help us advance our strategy. Uh, the Center for Advancing Innovation, uh, their founder and CEO is Rosemary Truman, who's here with us. Rosemary has a depth of knowledge in the biosciences and in the practice of creating business uh, that we're going to, uh, leverage and quite frankly, take advantage of. Uh, her experience in the, um, with the National Institutes of Health, with NASA, uh, with, uh, funders, investors, with the major pharmaceuticals gives us an opportunity, as I said jokingly, microwave ourself into this process. In other words, you know, we have to create an ecosystem here, and it's very difficult. You know, we're not Cambridge, you know, Massachusetts, we're not Boston, we're not Austin, we're not Raleigh-Durham for that matter, but we have a great strategy, and we have the great components of a great strategy that can be implemented. But it's gonna take time, and it will take time, but here's an opportunity, a unique opportunity for us to accelerate that by working through what we're calling this Innovation Challenge, that's going to produce ultimately twenty companies by this time next year that are gonna be prepared to establish business operations in Virginia Beach and start to advance that research into a commercial enterprise. So, the way it works, and I'll somewhat be brief, but if you have questions, obviously, we'll, we'll, we'll answer. The experience of the Center of Innovation, uh, Advancing Innovation, uh, is not a startup. They, they've had, uh, evidence of producing results, uh, in, in previous years. They've launched well over eighty startups, creating well over two thousand jobs. You know, where this is gonna go is that, working with the Innovation Challenge, we will take federally funded inventions. Inventions that, quite frankly, are sitting literally on the shelf at NIH or at NASA, and they're waiting for an entrepreneur or, or a team of entrepreneurs to take that innovation off the shelf and take it through the process of commercialization. Well, the Center for Advancing Innovation has the inside, uh, to that work that's been done and vetted through these various, uh, federal agencies. And for the first time, instead of taking a shotgun approach to advance this into multiple marketplaces, the test is now to advance this into one single location, thus Virginia Beach. And so, uh, working with, uh, the Center for Advancing Innovation, uh, the Innovation Challenge allows for, uh, the opportunity to, um, have this, these inventions, um, be identified, uh, through a business plan and startup challenge that's gonna be focused on veteran-related illnesses. We're gonna, again, not take a, take a shotgun approach, but we're gonna try to make sure it fits our sweet spot. So, um, most of the work or the inventions that are gonna be identified are going to address the various illnesses that follow veterans. And that can be, you know, heart, cardiovascular, oncology, P S, PSD, you know, those types of issues that affect, uh, veterans. The goal and the challenge will be to boost our ecosystem. As I said, we do not have capacity, uh, here to the extent that we have a large producer of innovation coming out of our research institution. So, this will, by having this challenge, start the process of building the capacity and building the ecosystem, uh, for us to have these startups look at Virginia Beach. And then, of course, the outcome is for us to, to be able to address, um, uh, the, um, uh, at least twenty veteran health-focused companies that will come out of the challenge. Um, as I mentioned, uh, the experience here is not new. Uh, the Center for Advancing Innovation has done this in other, uh, situations. The first challenge was done to address, uh, breast cancer, and in that initial challenge, eleven companies were produced and well over three million dollars raised. And the next, they got some, it was received so well, uh, by a number of institutions. It was, the C A I was asked, could they do it again, uh, looking at another, uh, type of, uh, illness? And this was, uh, brain health, and they, they doubled in terms of performance, uh, their ability to, to, uh, to identify new companies and, and to raise, uh, capital to support, uh, those companies going into the commercial, uh, uh, and, and to, into business. So, you know, there's a track record here, there's some excitement here, there's a connection that we have that we've never had before in terms of really being able to get into, um, identifying those opportunities, inventions as they are now that are, that are, that have been, in some cases, FDA-approved. And, you know, the cost of doing an FDA-approved type project and the time associated with that is nu- is, 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 is incredible. And so, we're being, we're gonna be able to jump past all that and now have those companies now with an identifiable research team come through a vetting process and produce at the end of that, an opportunity where that company is stipulated to have to move and, and, and continue their operations, uh, here in Virginia Beach. And so, we're excited, uh, about our new, uh, relationship and partnership and, and looking at the timeline, um, giving you a sense of how and where this is heading. Uh, starting, uh, in September this, this fall, uh, we'll start looking at, um, uh, teams that, uh, are interested in, uh, participating in the, in the challenge. Uh, there's sort of a rolling entry period that they'll have during the fall up through January. Uh, starting the first of the year, uh, we'll start narrowing that scope of interested parties and teams down, uh, through some evaluation processes, uh, an elevator speech that they'll have to present, uh, sort of an executive summary. Uh, they'll go through a vetting period with an evaluation team. Evaluation team are made up of individuals from major pharma, uh, that will say, these inventions and these, uh, ideas from these, um, interested teams have the greatest potential to go and be advanced into, into the stream of commerce. And so, they'll be asked to go through the next phase, which is building a business plan. Uh, we see that occurring, uh, March through June of, of next year. Uh, that fully, um, that business plan, of course, will be accompanied by, uh, a live pitch that they'll have to generate. Again, going through an evaluation process of judges that will determine whether or not, in fact, uh, they have done the homework in the research necessary to move that invention from its current status into a status where it can go into the marketplace. And if they are able to do so and been determined by the judges, they can become finalists. And at the point of becoming finalists in July or August, uh, they're now ready to launch that company and to start into, uh, raising the capital and applying for the various licenses associated with that, with that enterprise. This is cutting-edge, this is different, this is unique, this is how we're gonna get into the game faster than, than maybe a traditional route where it would take years for us to really move this needle. Uh, the evidence so far on the ground from talking to the marketplace and those that are experts in this tell us we have a unique opportunity to really advance this, uh, greatly. And, uh, you know, we're gonna pursue it, and, uh, hopefully, next year this time, we'll be talking about, uh, some of the additional Sanyals and Owls that have come out of the challenge that are now looking at Virginia Beach, uh, as their home. Next steps, uh, there are a couple of, uh, seminars, uh, there is a seminar we have scheduled for June 26th in our office to talk about federal funding opportunities. Uh, there's continued work that we have ongoing with the Innovation Park, uh, that I mentioned earlier. And, um, although it says road shows, the road shows have already started. Uh, Rosemary's gotten a jump start, has been in conversations with, uh, with Princeton, Columbia, and
Yale.
Yale, uh, with regard to our challenge and talking to the scientists and researchers there, uh, getting already some interested, uh, inquiries, uh, from that initial road show visit. So, we'll start conducting the road show as it related to this, to the timeline you saw earlier and the recruitment of the teams. And then, um, we're hoping that, uh, you know, at our next quarterly, uh, update to you, uh, by the end of the fall, we'll be able to give you, obviously, an update on the activities associated with the challenge. We have created a brand. Uh, Virginia Beach Bio is now becoming, I wouldn't say quite a conglomerate, although that sounds pretty cool, uh, but we do have a brand now, uh, one of which is the Virginia Beach Accelerator. As you see there, powered by Tywar Community College, that activity, that facility, that's allowing us to attract some of the startups. The next, of course, is the Innovation Park, uh, the wave of tech, of, of innovation where we're, um, going to build the fiscal space, if you will, for the opportunities that come our way. And then the last component of the brand is the Innovation Challenge, uh, that, um, we've now have this strategic partnership with the Center for Advancing Innovation. So with that, Mayor, I'll take a break and stop and ask, uh, hopefully, for any questions you may have, and
Shannon had a question.
Um, yeah, back on, on page twelve, Warren, with your phase three with the raising capital, um, I mean, venture capital's not always the easiest thing to raise. So, are these people, are these businesses raising money along the way, or is this when they're starting, or can you, it seems like a very short timeframe, right?
Yeah, so we have teed up a bunch of investors, um, the strategics like Pfizer, Novartis, GSK, et cetera. They've been working with us since the very beginning of the, our challenges. Um, Papas, Polaris, Third Rock, Xanderling, so a bunch of venture capital firms, as well as angel groups. And so, they have been funding some of our other startups, and they love this model because when do you, when does a, you know, an investor get to see ten teams for the same invention and ten different business, business plans for the same invention? So, they get to cherry pick the very best ones. So, we tee them up with the investor forums, and they pitch. And we make them pitch and pitch their brains out between, in phase one and phase two, so they have lots of practice.
So, these potential investors are who they're pitching in phases one and two?
Yeah, they, they will be, we have, we have milestones where they pitch to the investors, and the investors beat them up, and then they come back and pitch better.
Well, just think, if you're Pfizer, I mean, it is taken, and it's jump-started that invention to a point where you've not had to invest your capital into this. You can buy it at the point where it's, when it's ready to go to market. So, for the, for the major pharmas, it's a major way of jump-starting research and taking it into the commercial
I'm with you.
Market.
And Pfizer, you know, the deal, the licensing deal for Pfizer would be like five million dollars, right? 'Cause, 'cause NIH wants their pound of flesh. We've done a deal with the NIH to get these licenses for nothing. So, um, yeah, so, so they don't have to pay the five million, plus it doesn't take them two years to negotiate the license.
That's cool.
You're getting me excited, John.
This is a good application of the Silicon Valley model, very much so. Anybody who follows that, that's exactly what they do for, for startups. This would be a great approach to accelerate and find novel approaches to solve our drainage issues rather than traditional fifteen-year-long civil engineering solutions. There's a lot of people out there with innovative products, but this approach is being used to solve a lot of problems, to force competition and to force progress. And I applaud them for adapting it. I don't know if you read Peter Thiel's book Zero to One? Excellent book.
Yes, yes, Thiel's one of our advisors.
Oh, great, he's a sharp guy.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Is it, are they, is the inventions, are they only, are they strictly physical products, or is it, um?
I'll leave a hundred and seventy thousand to choose from.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, um, that, we've done twenty-five deals across the federal labs, and those are the ones we have to commercialize. So, it's, it's pretty much anything, you know, we want, we wanna get our access to. So, there's regenerative medicine, you know, for the veterans, challenging regenerative medicine, cardiovascular, diabetes, PTSD, TBI.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a, a wide variety, therapeutics, vaccines, class three diagnosis, class three devices, but then there's also some other really cool things, like gluing back an organ.
That's neat. That's really cool.
It's an asset.
It's taking reg- regenerative medicine and regen- to a new level. Yep, and, you know, it's interesting, you know, a lot of this has already been, been vetted through, uh, through our tax dollars, you know, because they've gone through the, the federal agencies, and there's, there's literally sitting on the shelf, waiting for the right opportunities for entrepreneurship to take it into the marketplace.
We're really just looking for the entrepreneur who wants to take a, oh, a prod- a product.
An invention into
So, it doesn't necessarily have to be their invention, so
That's right, it's not their invention.
Okay, that's what I wanted clarification on.
So, so, for example, the NASA inventions, they have had no less than ten million dollars spent on them, and most of them have already been put to the international space stations, or they've been made for, you know, Mars or, or whatever. So, they, you know, and NASA, um, makes things to, that work because they can't have any mistakes, and, I mean, sorry, saying the obvious, but sometimes inventions are very early-stage. These are actually, their T R L levels, uh, technology readiness levels are very, very, very high, so eights and nines.
Any other questions or comments? Excellent presentation, we look forward to great success. Thank you very much.
Welcome to Virginia Beach.
Thank you.
Great brief, Warren.
Yeah, you bet.
You put a new definition to what rock star is, my friend.
Good, good.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, City Council comments, do we have any? Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. I spoke with, uh, retired Chief Jay Cox today, and he wanted me to remind the council that Friday, May 26th at 5:30, there's the movie Fallen, and they said the only person they've got an RSVP back is from me and you. So, if they could, they would like everybody else that's, um, from the police foundation that would like, uh, the council to come to this, this movie. And I'm reading, it was premiered only in Phoenix, Washington DC, and Virginia Beach, and has already won some awards.
Thank you. If y'all will make a note of that, please. Any other comments? Yes, Mayor?
It's more in line of council liaison reports, but I may forget it by the time we get to that another week. Uh, bikes and trails advisory committee, I met yesterday, and they're very much concerned about, uh, education for bike safety, particularly with, uh, uh, schoolchildren, and are very much interested in, in how to get some education piece in, in the school. And so, they're suggesting that we might ask to have a liaison to that committee from the schools, not a student, but someone from either the school board or the staff, if, if we can do that.
Okay, well, let's do that then. We need to make a note to do that. Now, I can call over there and get someone? Okay, just, we make a note, please. Thank you, John.
Warren, today over the Daily News, there was an article about T C C and their welding program. It highlighted a twenty-four-year-old, uh, person who couldn't afford to go to college and was working at fast food, but went and got their welding certification from T C C and now is working for Newport News. But I, I don't think sometimes we do enough, this is, uh, we could always do more, but really telling people how important these certification programs are in these vocations and what a demand there is for these people and how well they pay, but Tywar Community, I, I just wanted to mention that they got a good kudo and a very good write-up in the paper. And of course, it's an industry close to my heart, working for the Navy, so it caught my attention, but there's a lot of employment opportunities there for young people through those certification programs. If they're listening and they're looking for that better job, then they oughta go over to T C C and look at some of those certification programs. There are jobs out there that pay well.
Well, and can I follow up on that, because just, wow, I guess it was, yeah, it was just last week, right, when I got back? Uh, I've been, you know, every quarter, I meet with a group of businesses, and I've been meeting with manufacturers a month before. And the good news is our manufacturers are starting, starting new chefs, you know, have hired new chefs, which is good news. But at the same time, that runs right here with me, 'cause there's low-hanging fruit, jobs are open that cannot be filled. At that meeting, I then arranged, Dr. Spence came over and joined us for this meeting we had last week. And we also had E C P I, T C C, and Old Dominion come as well, along with these companies. But you've hit the nail on the head. These types of jobs are out there. My daughter's a schoolteacher, the person welding's making a whole lot more money than my daughter, who's got the four-year college education. And, and that's fine, and that's good. And, and also something else, that this is an issue at home, as well as in schools with guidance counselors. counselors. You know, someone's thinking of manufacturing, like working in steel or IMS gear, as dirty work, you know? And it, you can eat on the floor of both those companies. That's not an exaggeration. And it's a technical job. And it's a robot, you gotta get fixed once. But we can't do and say enough about what you just said. We must really promote it. And I do believe, though, that TCC adjusts very quickly, ECPI does as well. It was nice to have Old Dominion there. But, and also apprenticeships are starting now with our companies working together, our manufacturing companies working together, which is huge. Used to fight for these employees between each other, now they're coming together and starting an apprentice school, which works with TCC, et cetera. But I didn't mean to go, but it's such, your point is right on.
Another topic that's maybe less pleasant is, we certainly learned down the budget process that our debt policy per capita isn't a per capita policy that we could fully exercise. So, I think at some point, we need a discussion because obviously, the 3,000 is our per capita amount, but clearly, it's not an amount that we can use without putting our credit rating in jeopardy. That certainly was a discussion that we had. So, at some point, we need to have a discussion of the debt per capita policy that we have. And given our population growth, which is relatively low, it's not going to fundamentally change between now and 2030. We need to understand what portion of that policy, just like a credit anywhere else, you can use without impacting your credit rating so we can more consciously prioritize and rank and look at how we allocate the real usable capacity of our debt policy. That may be a retreat discussion, but I think we need to have that discussion so we can make more informed decisions now that that's been revealed.
Good, good, good point. Other comments? Okay, I'm gonna make a prediction. Everything should be on consent. Anyone argue that point?
I want some things, I'm not pulling them.
Okay, everything's on consent.
Everybody, okay?
Do a good job, Mr. Vice Mayor.
You have my abstention.
You got mine too. John?
I'm voting, but I have explanations to give these out front, I'm voting no on item one. And the reason being is, we, I think before we change this Workforce Housing Board, we first need to have a better understanding why it has not worked. And I think we have failed to, before we expand the duties, we need to understand what about the economy and what about this board? It's not produced anything. We don't have that understanding, changing the duties isn't going to make it successful. So, I would much have preferred to have seen how this is going to make anything different. When you look at the, I did some time looking at market analysis and looking at Heritage Foundations and Brookings Institute, looking at some other places. These programs are not really successfully delivering anywhere. So, what is different that's going to make this work? And I fail to see that. And I'll have other comments about why I think what we're asking the manager to do is already in his job. I actually got the position description for the city manager's job, which I'll talk about out front. And there's nothing in here that he's not already required to do, so I don't understand the purpose of the resolution.
So, that's just no on number one.
And on number four.
Great work. The Chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions for open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes, publicly held property discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for the public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3, Beach District, Beach District, Council District, Beach District. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration of or interviews of the prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Denver.
Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Henley.
Aye.
Mrs. Payne.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor.
Aye.
Mayor Saffron.
Aye.